I'm good, how are you?
Good. Dennis was gonna be here.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of July 7th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 23rd, 2021.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Jerry.
Okay, Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Ann Core.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next, we have a couple of special presentations to recognize former Commissioners Tom Beckius and Dean Finnegan. First, Tom, could you please come to the podium? I will now ask Jerry to read the resolution of appreciation for former Commissioner and current City Councilperson Beckius.
Okay. Resolution number PC dash 01762, whereas Thomas Beckius was appointed to the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on November 7th, 2016, for a six-year term and has resigned to fulfill his duties as an elected at-large City Council Representative. Mr. Beckius has contributed four years and four months of volunteer service to the Lincoln and Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. And whereas during his service, Mr. Beckius contributed countless hours and diligent effort towards the implementation of the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan with and Long Range Transportation Plan, updates to the county and city zoning codes, and has reviewed over 800 development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during his term include, but are not limited to, the 2018 Downtown Master Plan, Transit Development Plan, Commercial Design Standards, and new parking standards, Long Range Transportation Plan update, and Comprehensive Plan update, large-scale wind energy projects, streamlining the process of subdivisions and waivers of design standards, and review of various watershed master plans and redevelopment plans. Also, the South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, Lincoln Bike Plan, Annexation Packages, Accessory Dwelling Units, and Capital Improvement Program conformity reviews, County Text Amendment for Large-Scale Poultry Farms, review of various redevelopment plans, and Transportation Improvement Plan and Capital Improvement Program conformity reviews. And whereas the growth and development of Lincoln and Lancaster County has benefited greatly from the dedicated service of Mr. Beckius, and whereas in recognition of his loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude and commend Thomas Beckius for his dedicated volunteer service. And to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made a part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to Thomas Beckius in recognition of his dedicated service, support, and contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County, dated the 7th day of July 2021. And this is signed by your fellow commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
One more item, we have a nice plaque, Tom, for to recognize your work for us and with us. On behalf of the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County, I want to thank you for bringing your skillset as well as your dedication to all the work that we do, and very much are happy to say that we look forward to continuing to work with you on the City Council as well. So on behalf of everyone, thank you for your service, and please accept this plaque on behalf of everyone.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I spoke earlier, a few weeks ago, at one of our regular Planning Commission hearings. So I, and I know we have a short agenda today, so I don't want to keep you all very long, but I do want to say thank you to each one of you for putting up with me, for teaching me, and for making sure that we move Lincoln forward in the right direction. It has been a privilege to work with each of you. It has been a privilege to continue to watch you, and I will continue to learn from you every two weeks, as well as you all continue to move the city forward and make Lincoln better. So thank you for working with me. I enjoyed it very, very much, and I look forward to our continued service together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Get official, I do need a motion.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Jerry.
Okay. Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We are also recognizing former Commissioner Dean Finnegan, who unfortunately is unable to attend today. Jerry, will you please read her resolution of appreciation?
Yes, thank you. This is resolution number PC dash 01763, whereas Dean Finnegan was appointed to the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission on November 7th, 2016, for a six-year term and has resigned for personal reasons. Ms. Finnegan has contributed four years and four months of volunteer service to Lincoln and Lancaster County community as a member of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. And whereas during her service, Ms. Finnegan contributed countless hours and diligent effort towards the implementation of the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Long Range Transportation Plan, updates to the county and city zoning codes, and has reviewed over 800 development applications. Other projects and studies of major importance which came before the Planning Commission during her term include, but are not limited to, the 2018 Downtown Master Plan, Transit Development Plan, Commercial Design Standards, and new parking standards, Long Range Transportation Plan update, and Comprehensive Plan update, large-scale wind energy projects, streamlining the process of subdivisions and waivers of design standards, and review of various watershed master plans and redevelopment plans, South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, Lincoln Bike Plan, Annexation Packages, Accessory Dwelling Units, and Capital Improvement Program conformity reviews, County Text Amendment for Large-Scale Poultry Farms, review of various redevelopment plans and Transportation Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Program conformity reviews. And whereas the growth and development of Lincoln and Lancaster County has benefited greatly from the dedicated service of Ms. Finnegan, and whereas in recognition of her loyal and dedicated service, it is the desire of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission to express their appreciation and gratitude to command Dean Finnegan for her dedicated volunteer service, and to cause such expression of appreciation and gratitude to forever be made a part of the official records of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln Lancaster County. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to Dean Finnegan in recognition of her dedicated service, support, and contributions to the public planning process for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County, dated the 7th day of July 2021.
And we likewise have a plaque for Dean, and we look forward to a time when we can celebrate with her and converse over the happenings and doings of our community that she so loves, and we appreciate what she brought to us, which was a deep knowledge base of our community, as well as just the love for everything, that all the work that we have been doing. So we look forward to that moment in time in the future with Dean, and really appreciate all of her work for us.
I would move approval.
Second, Ball.
Jerry.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. There are several final action items on our agenda. They are 1.2, Special Permit 1194B, 1.3, County Special Permit 13050A, 1.4, Special Permit 21013, and 1.6, Use Permit 19003A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, before I do that, I just want to note that we did receive a letter of opposition that was distributed to the commission members relative to item 1.2, Special Permit 1194B, which is on the consent agenda. As such, we'll be removing that for a separate public hearing today, so that those issues can be addressed. Okay, the first three items are associated. Item 1.1A is Annexation 21003 to Annex approximately 48.06 acres, more or less, including the adjacent right-of-way in South 70th Street. The associated changes on 21022 from AG Agricultural District and R3 Residential District to R5 Residential District Plan Unit Development with associated waivers and adjustments to Title 26 Land Subdivision and Title 27 Zoning. And the associated changes on 21023 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District for approximately 6.7 acres. All of these are generally located at South 70th Street and Rockabye Road. Item 1.2 again is being removed from the consent agenda, so I will not call that. Item 1.3 is Special Permit 13050A to expand an existing community unit plan boundary by adding Lot 15 on property generally located at South 115th Street and Panama Road. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the county clerk within 14, or the county board within 14 days. Item 1.4 is Special Permit 21013 to allow for a new community unit plan for five lots on property generally located at Southwest 84th Street and West O Street, and this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.5 is Use Permit 19003A to allow for up to 200 multifamily units, 200 persons within a residential healthcare facility and/or up to 270,000 square feet of commercial floor area, with an additional waiver to reduce internal setbacks to zero on property generally located at the southeast corner of North 27th Street and Interstate 80. I would note that there was a staff memo dated July 2nd, which was distributed to Planning Commission identifying revisions to the conditions of the staff report, and these were agreed upon by both staff and the applicant. Item 1.6 is Waiver 21004 to waive the paving and sidewalk for Pine Tree Lane on property generally located at North 7th Street and Pine Tree Lane. Again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites?
Okay, doesn't look like we have any of those either.
Okay. Is there anyone present today who would like to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state the item that you'd like to testify on.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Shear.
Jerry.
Okay. Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, item 3.1 is Special Permit 1194B to allow five dwelling units in the R4 Residential District in a local landmark building with waivers on property generally located at 745 D Street. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Is there, are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
I don't think we have any of those either. All right, Stephanie.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Stephanie Rouse with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. This application is an amendment to an existing special permit for historic preservation for the German Lutheran Emanuel Church. It was designated back in 1986, which is when the first special permit was approved to allow an interior design studio with a waiver to the parking requirements for zero parking. As you can see in the image there, the building is built out nearly to the property line, so there's no space on-site for parking. In 1995, the special permit was amended to allow for a printing shop, office rental, and one dwelling unit, maintaining the parking waiver to zero as well. The applicant is requesting to amend the special permit for five dwelling units and also to maintain the parking waiver for zero stalls on-site. Originally, they had proposed doing five angled parking stalls on South 8th Street. Neither Public Works nor the South Salt Creek Neighborhood Association was in support of that request, so the applicant removed that from the site plan, which you can see here, to maintain the structure as is, no major site improvements. The South Salt Creek Neighborhood Association submitted a letter in support of this after the redesign to maintain the existing tree and not include the parking. There's about three parallel stalls adjacent to the site on 8th Street and D Street, as well as ample parking adjacent to Cooper Park on the north side of D Street as well. In regards to some concerns about density, the R4 district would permit just one dwelling unit within this large building. The special permit for historic preservation is intended to allow flexibility in the reuse of historic structures. The five dwelling units proposed allow for the economic reuse of this building with minimal impact to the historic structure itself, as there won't be any additions or exterior alterations. And then residential is more in keeping with the character of this neighborhood than the previous commercial uses within this building. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The current zone is R4, is that correct?
Correct.
So what would be the density in terms of apartment complexes, the like, in an R4 without the historic overlay? Just generally, are, how are they allowed?
Well, given the very small footprint, if an apartment complex were allowed, it would have to go through the CUP, but with 4,000 square feet, only one dwelling unit would have been allowed.
Thank you.
Stephanie, it looks like the right-of-way is maybe a little bit larger than some other parts of the town. Is that why the angled parking was proposed in that area?
Correct. They were able to show five angled parking stalls in front of the building along 8th Street, given the large right-of-way.
Is there any way that the parking could be on D Street instead of on 8th Street? Like, put angle parking in there, or?
I'm not sure. It was never proposed. I assume that Public Works would still have the same concern with doing angle parking on D Street as they did 8th Street, with just maneuvering and backing in and out that close to the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
And it looks like on your, the map that you have up currently, the site plan, there, it says existing no parking sign, so, and you may have said this, but I'm assuming that sign is being removed?
No, they'll remain. It's just showing the no parking within the certain distance of the intersection, so you can park on the west side.
Okay, on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. And what about on 8th Street, then? Where can parking start?
I believe it's fairly similar. I think the sign's right about here, so you could do one stall right in front, behind that sign.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Okay, thank you. All right, testimony from the applicant.
Hello, good afternoon. Nate Bus, 5928 Whitefish Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, representing the buyers of the property Vertex. What she said, all that, all that stuff. But yeah, we are, we've looked at buying this property for the last few months. It was actually my wife's idea to kind of look at this as possible dwelling units. And it's really kind of, it's more, it was the old church, but it was more of a school, and it's really cut up that way, where I'd say there's really six, six spots, two on the basement, two on first floor, and two on second floor. And so, we've talked about doing one-bedroom and studio-type units in here, and then a common space in the basement as well, that could be flex space for a larger gathering of family members. I would say we do, we do intend to sell, these are not, these are not rental units. These are going to be owner-occupiers here, all five of them will be. And I think that probably, and we're not going to allow those people to rent out their own unit either, it's strictly owner-occupiers, and that's, a lot of the, a lot of the interests we've had to date has been really generated around two demographic students, and with these only being one-bedroom, I don't see this being, you know, three or four students packing into one unit. These are one-bedroom, likely single student that can get down to the university quickly. The other, I guess, demographic is people looking to have a little bit more of affordable second home, kind of like what's been in the Haymarket area, option row type deals, where they want that unit for game days, events, arena stuff going on. Again, they can't rent theirs out, we're not renting ours out, it'd be this, that's the other demographic, is people that want that second, close-to-downtown unit. Like Stephanie had mentioned, we did approach the parking option. Historic Preservation Group was kind of on the fence about it, but I had deferred to LTU, and LTU is not in support, and I kind of had some mixed emotions from neighbors, but for the most part, they were more interested in the preservation of the right-of-way and the large right-of-way stuff that is in South Creek. It's a very, it's a very active neighborhood, and I'm sure you've heard of the Cooper Park and stuff around there, so they've been good to work with. I did attend their neighborhood meeting, and that's where I discussed it. We left it in at that time, parking, knowing that we may get some of that pushback, and since then, obviously, we removed that and talked to Justina Clark there, and she's been great to work with, and provided that support letter. Can't think of anything else off the head. Like she mentioned, no major exterior improvements, but with these being owner-occupier, we really felt like that was the way to really hit the historic preservation of this, of the structure.
Nick?
From your knowledge of the area, are there ample spots along 8th Street and such to park?
Yeah, a bit more specifically, probably on D Street. On the north side, there is, all the way down to the, to the west there, along the park is parking, and on the south side of D Street as well. We've been by there, because I knew this was going to be a thing, so we've been by there over the last several months on a regular basis, through the weekend, through the week, in different, different hours. And there's always parking on that street. When there isn't, there's a baseball game going on, there's a little league, and actually the time there was a little league game going on, I was still able to find a handful of parking spots. Like I said, I really don't think we're, we're looking at a two-car dweller, dwellers, and if there's, if there's anybody that wants to park, all the units actually have windows that face the north. If I'm living there, I'm parking on the north side of D Street, you know, where I can see my, see my vehicle.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, and I want to thank you for reaching out to the neighborhood, too, and making sure and having good conversations with them, that's really important.
Yep, they've been good.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Testimony in support of this project. Testimony in support. Any neutral testimony? How about testimony in opposition? Okay, any further questions for staff? All right, applicant, I'm assuming you don't have anything more either, okay? I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry.
Okay. Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'd also move that we approve Special Permit 13050A to allow this development.
I believe it was 1194B.
Oh, sorry. I was in the wrong area.
Right.
Thank you. 1194B, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Second, Edgerton.
Oh, go ahead.
Discussion.
Well, this is, the neighborhood is very much in, like this, and I think preserving the church as, as historic- Well, this is, the neighborhood is very much like this, and I think preserving the church as historical building and allowing the residences to fit with inside makes great sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, my concern is if we don't allow use like this for the future, I worry about what will happen to that resource that we've had and have made a commitment as a community to say it's important, we want to preserve this, so I'm in favor of this.
I actually had the privilege about 20 years ago to see pictures inside of this upper apartment that was there at that time and is still there, and it was beautiful. So I imagine it's still very nice inside, original woodwork, that kind of thing. So this truly is a treasure, and I think that we do need to preserve it. I understand, you know, we had a letter in opposition, and I understand that they have, you know, concerns about parking. And I do want to encourage, you know, residents or, you know, interested parties to write in and/or come and testify and share with us their concerns. It may not feel like we consider them, but we certainly do. This is one of those situations, though, where, you know, I agree with Dennis, that I would much rather see this building preserved and kept in a nice state and promote some affordable housing than to let it go into disrepair and eventually be torn down. So I will support the application. Jerry?
Okay. This is for the conditional approval of special permit 1194B. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, the next public hearing item is item 4.1, use permit 126G to amend the existing use permit with associated waivers to building height and parking for residential uses on Lot 3, on property generally located at Wilderness Woods Place and Executive Woods Drive. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No. All right, Rachel?
Rachel Christopher, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This item is an amendment to an existing use permit for two waivers for residential lots. The location is south of Yankee Hill Road and east of 14th Street. This particular lot is on the west side of Wilderness Woods Place. The zoning is O3, and to the north are, north and south are office uses, and to the west are multifamily. So this lot is already approved for residential use. The request is for 119 dwelling units, and there are two requested waivers, as I mentioned, increasing the building height to 55 feet and a reduction in the required parking from two stalls per dwelling unit to 1.5 stalls per dwelling unit. There have been quite a few other waivers like this previously approved for multifamily uses that are listed in the staff report. It's also supported in our comprehensive plan, as well as by the other research cited. And the applicant has stated that the waiver is to allow for the taller ceiling heights and for underground parking. As shown on this exhibit, the location's about 475 feet to the west of the single-family area, and it is separated by a lake for the golf course there. And so, due to that distance and separation, we are not anticipating significant negative impacts to those single-family residents. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Rachel?
Rachel, I noticed in the example, in your report, of other areas where there have been parking reductions, you gave several great examples. I noticed a few of them talked about putting those reductions with requirements in terms of the number of bedrooms.
Sure.
Tell me a little bit about how that came about? Like, how was that part and parcel of the, would it have been because that was what was proposed by the developer, or was that something that came up as a result of trying to balance the competing concerns?
I would imagine it was an attempt to balance that, and maybe also something suggested by the developer. I would maybe defer to other staff who might know more of the history of those specific applications.
You're not, in your recommendations, you're not necessarily recommending coupling that with any kind of specific requirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you talk about why you didn't think that was important in this instance?
Sure. I would think that, I believe that the applicant, although it's not tied to the approval, has talked about their anticipated dwelling unit types, and so based on that information is a big reason why we're supporting the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Rachel? Okay, applicant.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200, actually just around the corner from this lot. So yes, in 2017, and maybe we'll go back to the exhibit Rachel has here, I think you can all see it, but, actually, we'll go back even farther. So in 2001, the golf course was created, the clubhouse, the single-family over there, and then the rest of this was deemed to be an office complex, which it did start out that way, with several of the buildings in this area. And then, as we've kind of seen over time, and more so recently, that the office demand wasn't quite as strong as they would have thought. And so, we began the conversion to multifamily. And so, we did this phase first to multifamily, this phase second to multifamily. And then, the one office that has gone in outside of these offices is the Hausmann office complex there, and they have room for expansion. And so, this was, this lot was amended in 2017, I believe, to be converted, to add multifamily as a use and do 102 units at that time. And so, there's kind of some pause there, then, thinking about what they wanted to do, some assets were allocated in other places for this client. And then, it came back into the foray this year. And so, that was, so then the need for the height increase was mainly because they went out to fourth floor, but they're going to a flat roof. And then, to the parking requirement, as you mentioned, Tracy. So, right now, their current layout is going to be 60% studios and one-bedrooms. And so, and I think the other reason that staff has been willing to look at this reduction to 1.75 on the parking ratio is, this is all owned by the Schleick family, commercial investment properties. And aside from the Hausmann complex, and they're also co-owners of the golf course, they would really only hurt themselves if they weren't able to provide adequate parking. And so, and as you may know, I mean, they've got 40 years of multifamily experience and lots of units, and they know, they know from their experience that the worst thing they can do is not provide enough parking, but with that super-high ratio. So, for example, their project on 225 North Cotner, that's just being completed now, that was a little different, because we went down to a 1-4 parking ratio there. So then, it was legislated that X number of units had to be studios and ones. So, they're confident, our current, in our latest layout, we're actually at like a 1-8-6, so we're getting close to 1-9, so I think the 1.5 works. They've expanded, this will have underground parking, as well as surface parking, but given what they see out here as potential tenants, they went very heavy on the studios and ones. And so with that, we feel like the parking at 1.75 works well, and the height gets us to where we need to do to get a little more efficiency with that fourth floor. And again, they're, they own virtually everything around here, and as Rachel pointed out, we're pretty far from the single-family homes across the way. And they were outside of the notification area, but we did reach out to them, send them exhibits, explain what was happening with both the, mainly the height issue. In 2017, that was one of their biggest concerns, but it did get approved at 45 foot. So, this is kind of an update, based on current design and a few changes, and I think it should work well. We've spoke with Chad Wiles at the Hausmann office there, and they're fine with everything. And they're really our only neighbor that's of different ownership. So, with that, be happy to answer any other questions you have.
So I actually had the privilege of staying there when I first moved there for temporary housing.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I know they're there for pretty well. What are the height limits or the heights of the other units that were built before?
You mean currently?
Currently.
Right. So 45-foot height, and actually, the 45-foot height, what we showed to the neighbors in 2017 was pitched roof, a 45-foot height pitched roof. And the way they measure that here in Lincoln is they go from the peak to the eaves, and halfway between those is how your height is determined. So, the peak of the roof, as we showed it in 17, would have been actually at about 51 feet. And this building's going to end up being 53. So we're actually one foot, four inches taller with a flat roof than what would have been proposed with a pitched roof in a three-story building back then. And so, and for reference, I think Joey's building there, Joey Hausmann's building, is right around 35 feet, so.
Okay.
So how many stories are the apartments that are already built there?
These here were all two stories. They're a 10/11 Platts model with attached garages. And so, this particular building with flat roof is going to, there was density left, and that's where they want to use it with the pond there and the entryway up to the clubhouse. So, it is, it is going to be of higher density than what they've done back here, but I think the intent was to try to move that density to this lot the whole time.
Is there any opportunity for maybe, you know, like, if the parking lot was full, that they would have, you know, a chance to park in some of these other areas?
Yeah. In fact, what we know we'll do is do a cross-parking access, because they own this office building too, right here. So we're going to have about 34 stalls there that we'll do a cross-parking access easement on, thinking that, and those are, right now, most of those tenants, I think, are financially oriented, so they're usually out of there, eight to five, out of there, and then, the same thing during the day, they would get some cross-parking over here on the, the surface lot is going to be out in that location, so then it works well, that could be our overflow.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
I have a question. I don't think it's all that relevant, but I'm just interested, Mike. You don't have to answer it if you don't want. Can you, can you give just a general sense in how the building site, parking will be oriented on the site? We didn't really, I know it's not maybe appropriate to outside at this point, but...
Sure, sure. No, we...
It might be interesting to folks to see how, because I know it'll be designed well and...
So we're doing modifications to the northern end of it, and I'm probably zoomed out as far as I can get there, Dennis, but, so this is the parking for that 8700 building.
Right.
And so, we've actually revised this, where we're going to have it flow, this drive aisle flow through, provide some different things here. The underground parking area will take up this entire area right here, and then there's going to be a green roof on top of the parking garage. So, and off the top of my head, I can't remember how many stalls are there, but we had, this shows 67, we're currently at 74, plus that. And so, and this is the road, so the lakes over here on this side, yeah.
Okay. That helped, I think that helps.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions right now? Okay. Testimony in support of this project? Any testimony in support? Any neutral testimony? How about testimony in opposition? Any further staff questions? Steve, looks like you might want to share something with us.
Sure. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. To answer Tracy's question about the parking and why we didn't on this one specifically tie it to the number of bedrooms, I'm answering the question because it's really a separate effort that we're working on at the Planning Department to come forward to actually amend our parking, our height, and some other items in regarding encouraging both affordable housing and multifamily housing. And the staff report on page two, item three, talks about, as part of our research for that, we had found that 59% of all renters only had one car or less. And so, I think what our experience has shown by seeing this coming to us time and time again, people asking for parking reductions, and our own research showing that in Lincoln, renters typically have fewer cars, we're feeling much more comfortable not tying it to a specific amount, particularly when it's 1.75. We think the parking ratio could really be set at 1.5 dwelling units for multifamily. And so, knowing that that is coming forward as a text amendment, and hopefully that'll be before you in August, that's why for this one, unlike all the previous ones, we thought, you know, that tie to how many bedrooms and studios really isn't necessary in Lincoln. It's fine if the applicant wants to provide additional parking, but we don't think that that will be necessary, that our standard of two is actually quite high.
I do want to, I can't remember if this is during a briefing, during a meeting, or when it was, but the data that you analyzed, where did that come from?
Excellent question. Stephanie Rouse did the research for that, and off the top of my head, I would only cite it incorrectly. So, but it is based on recent research that was done, but we can get that to you specifically.
Okay, so what I remember is that was from the 2010 census data, and so I do have some concerns. I wasn't going to say anything, but now that you brought it up, I am going to get it on the public record. In this, I think this is a weak argument for this particular project, because it says that the data showed that most of the renter households are one-vehicle households, with the trend being more pronounced in older neighborhoods. I would argue that this is not an older neighborhood. In fact, this is part of the newer part of Lincoln, so I don't think that that really fits here. And the other thing that causes me concern is that if this is from the 2010 census data, that data is a little bit old at this point. I know that the 2020 census data isn't quite out yet, but I would like to see what that is before we start doing like blanket text amendments for the whole city. Now, again, I don't think this applies to this project. I think that this project, because of some of the reasons that Mike Eckert explained, you know, with the cross-parking, and this is all the same ownership, that I'm fine with this here, but I think that going forward, we need to consider some of those statements there before we make a blanket...
Sure, and the text amendment will be more specific in regards to that. I think what we've seen nationwide, though, is actually the parking, amount of parking requirements nationwide has been reduced. So 2010 being old data, it might actually be less than 2010 data.
And I would really like to see that data, because I know that, in maybe big cities on the coasts, that might be true, but I know that Midwesterners really like their vehicles, and we all, and we also have, we don't have public transportation here like we do in other big cities, so I'd really like to see the data for Lincoln and more current data for that.
I think ultimately, one of the things you also, when we come forward with our text amendment, is that the city needs to decide what are the most important trade-offs? Is it most important for us to be a city with ample, large parking lots that are not always fully used, or a city that has a lot of housing and a lot of opportunities for places for people to live? Perhaps in some locations, there's a little bit less parking, or we rely on a developer to provide the parking that they think is pertinent, and perhaps sometimes it means that you use the adjacent private roadway or the public street for some of the parking, wouldn't have it be for all the parking. And you're correct, certainly in older areas, our downtown area, our parking requirement is zero. And so, we've found that to be pretty successful. There are parking garages, there are people who, in the downtown, you have much more of ability to walk around, but I think we need to kind of make some trade-offs citywide in terms of parking ratio as well.
Steve, are you also looking at commercial projects in this same attempt to develop?
Yes, we'll be...
Because we see too many wide-open parking lots.
Yes, and particularly our B2 and B5 zoning districts, which are in newer areas, we would actually probably look at reducing the parking lot even, parking requirement even further, but that's often because there's a lot of mixed uses, and as Mike pointed out, you might have an office or a retail use that finally, after five or 10:00 in the evening, those stalls are open, and so, since there's more cross-parking easements... five or 10:00 in the evening, those stalls are open. And so since there's more cross parking easements, um, we think that parking requirement in some of the commercial districts could go down even further.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments on this application? Okay, um, applicant, any rebuttal? Okay, all right.
I would move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second, Ball.
Jerry?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Uh, I would also move that we approve uh, use permit one two six G.
Second, Edgerton.
Discussion.
I think the one point five, uh, one point seven five is more than adequate for, for this project. And, and again, with the cross parking, which we've used extensively in our own developments, that um, uh, it works very well.
I agree. And with what both Steve and Mike stated with regard to numbers and what's going on in that particular area, that being primarily owned by um, the same entity, um, as well as the distance from the um, um, single housing, um, this makes perfect sense.
Okay, it looks like, I think it looks like a good project. Um, and wish him best success. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the uh, staff, or conditional approval of use permit one two six G. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. All right.
Uh, move to adjourn. Edgerton.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
All right, we're adjourned.